Well, you're a freshman. And what made you respond to the questionnaire that got your butt sitting here? Why did you?
Check the wrong box or what?
Why did you?
No.
What piqued your interest?
She wanted to meet you.
I know.
I know.
I wanted to get in some more like speaking roles. I wanted to like.
As we start every board meeting, if we could stand up and recite the pledge of allegiance two weeks in a row. First up is an approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda? Not, I move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Mr. Delanti.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Thanks very much. Next up is our time for a public comment. If anybody would like to address the board, they're more than welcome to. All you have to do is come up to the podium. Okay. I see we're good for tonight, so we'll move forward.
We do have a student here as one of our student representatives. I gave her a heads up that I was going to ask her to introduce herself for us tonight, so I'll give that. Give her a chance to do that.
Hi, my name is Victoria Rosas and thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, maybe tell us, could you tell us a little bit about yourself, what grade you're in, anything that you, classes that you're in or activities that you do here at the school?
Um, I'm a freshman here at Warren and I take mostly honors and I decided to take an AP class this year. And I'm in one extracurricular activity, which is the speech team.
What's your AP class?
Uh, AP World, history.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, welcome and appreciate you being here tonight. It's really nice to have a freshman rep here. I don't know if we've ever had one before. It's kind of a brave thing to do when you're first starting out and doing something like this, but it's always good to have all sorts of opinions. So, thank you for being here. Next up is the consent agenda. I move to approve personnel recommendations per exhibit A, numbers fifty-six and fifty-seven, as posted. And athletics activities and volunteer personnel recommendations per exhibit B, numbers B fifteen and B sixteen, as posted. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to action items. The first action item is we're looking for an approval on the Oak Plain campus locker room.
All right, we actually are gonna have Carrie and Chris come up and talk to us. You guys can just come up and have a seat probably is the best thing to do. We have a couple drawings here to look at for the locker room and we need approval for one of them. We did get, when we asked for initial approval to start moving forward with the project, we had an estimated budget. Chris and Carrie might go into some more detail, but we then with DLA met with staff members that would be impacted by the project specifically from the athletic department and the PE department to kind of go through their list. We had done a list of what we felt like we needed with the administration already. And after we worked through that list and DLA put that to drawings, the price was a little bit higher than we had initially estimated. So you've got a higher, option two is a little bit higher of a cost. They're gonna talk through that. And then we asked them to kind of go back and say, okay, well, if we did do the project at what was initially estimated, what would we have to give up? So those are the two things that we've got tonight and I'll let you guys take the floor.
Thank you both for your help with this tonight.
Absolutely. So, thank you for allowing me to be here. Again, Carrie Matlock, DLA Architects, and Happy New Year. So, tonight we're gonna take a look at option one, which is the skinnier version, the one that's already done their new year's resolution. And then, then option two, the one that might need to trim down. So, option one was the one that we just mentioned was going to be the less costly of the two. The difference here is really that all the components are the same. So, we have locker rooms for PE, locker rooms for teams for both boys and girls. There's a, but the difference in this one is that the training room is smaller and it's located in a different position. And it, and then the women's and men's for PE and for coaches are separated. The, the adult spaces between those locker rooms. The other one, the option, and this is run right around sixty million. I want to speak just generally to that cost. It's a, it's a good estimate at this point. But it's, this is really a conceptual document. It's not been designed thoroughly, so we're gonna go through a process next that would allow us to do that. So, with option two, the training room is at, is on the top side of that picture and across the corridor from the locker room. And you can see that it's much larger than the second one and, the first one rather. And then the space for the adults, the PE and the coaches are all in the same area. So it's a very different concept in that it's more collaborative as opposed to separated, men's and women's. And there's pros and cons to each of that and that's whatever, whatever your district would like. There's really no general opinion out there for that. But it just seems to be a lot of preference for which, for which option you would like. Here, this version, it was done early on and that second, the first option that we looked at, we actually trimmed back the locker rooms a little bit too so that they were a little bit smaller in that one. It's about five thousand square foot difference. That five thousand square feet adds up to a couple million dollars. So, that's really the differences between the two. Again, all components are the same. We've got PE locker rooms, team locker rooms, storage areas, a space for coaches and for referees and, and PE instructors to be there. And then washroom facilities for all. Any questions?
Carrie, I wasn't able to find like where the officials would, would change on that first.
We were, we were assuming that they would be in this, in the, in the rooms where the adults would be only. So they'd share that space.
Sixteen, for this model?
For both, for both of them they would. So they'd share the collaborative space that, that was in the center for the second option. And then they would be separated by gender for the.
So, in the, in the second option, there is an actual space that's called officials' room?
You can have it either way really. That's up to you. That, yes, we initially did it as that. But again, like I mentioned, this, that other option could be cut back to match more of what this, this one was looking like as well. So.
Okay, there's a question about supervision of the locker rooms during the daytime when gym classes are changing hands and things like that.
Pat, can you come up here and help? I might need some help with this one.
Okay, so, um. Can you guys hear me? So, uh, I remember feedback from students and also PE teachers that the line of sight in the current locker rooms where the office is, the locker rooms are blocking, the lockers are blocking the line of sight for.
At Oak Plain, there's no line of sight. At Almond, there is.
Correct, right. And that's where we were at Oak Plain. And I remember concerns from both staff and students that things happen that adults can't see. And, and I feel creepy talking about this about a locker room where kids are changing, like. But there are things going on that kids are doing. I know my son experienced things. And so, I'm concerned with the, the combination in, in the second proposal with the staff offices being all in one. How is there supervision of the lockers? And I don't see any kind of line of sight in the drawing. Maybe there's something I don't understand. The first one looks very straightforward to me that they are able to see, have some type of a visual line of what kids are doing. So, can you help me with thoughts on that?
Sure. It, it really would be a, since it's a dual gender, they'd have to go physically go into the locker room to observe and to make sure there's any security issue. So that, that's why there's two options here. So, up to you.
Not a criticism. I was just wanting to make sure that I understood that. That's what I figured, so.
Is that the same scenario in both the options though?
Uh, I, there is a, a window on the first option between each of those spaces for the women's PE to view into the locker room. However, I would say that the best vantage point is from the locker room.
Sure, but the offices that are drawn, women's and men's, those would have windows, correct? So they would be able to see into the lockers. Do you have any thoughts on?
Yeah, I prefer looking into the lockers.
Absolutely.
Almond has that and seems to solve a lot of problems.
Yep. I bet.
But, I mean, Carrie's not wrong. Clearly, if you're in the locker room, that is absolutely the best way to do it.
Sure, of course.
But it's not always realistic.
Not realistic.
Right. The other benefit to that as a student, or teachers on plan, Carrie, when they're just at their desk, we could extra supervision because they're at their desk.
Right, line of sight.
Your eyes are going up.
I just remember that distinctly from when we toured. That was one of the concerns that adults had. And kids have made a lot of comments in the four years my student was here that there was very little supervision as to what was going on when kids were coming and going from PE, which was causing problems. So, okay.
Go ahead. When I look at both of these, I see the athletic training and one it's way up on the top and the other it's way in the corner. And it's adjacent to the men. Do, do women have to go outside and in? And if not, was there any thought to putting that in the center? Was there any thought to putting that in the middle? I mean, the women have to get outside and go around the hallway. I just didn't, I know it's totally out of character, but.
No, I thought, I already thought the same thing, but I wasn't gonna say it.
Why, why we, why we located it there was based upon the conversations that we had with staff, being, wanting it closer to the football field and to the fields out there so that it was accessible.
Got it, okay.
Which is very challenging for the trainers. Carrie's absolutely right. They load up with the water, the ice and everything else for all the outdoor sports. And when it's inside like it currently is at Oak Plain, it's a nightmare for them.
Do they have to be able to get in rapidly from the outside?
It's even harder at Almond. It's easier at Almond, but it is harder at Almond because it's in the middle of this hallway.
Thank you.
So I know we talked about location and this makes all the sense in the world, but for as long as, I wanna make sure I'm not missing anything. But as, for as long as we have the pool, this would mean detached lockers and kids in swimsuits would be walking to the pool?
That's not a problem for our female students because that pool, that locker room was redone and is still nice for swim units and for swimmers. They would still use that. Problem is for PE, I don't know how we're gonna do it males. There is a swim locker room, boys' locker room, so we are eliminating the dungeon.
Right.
Except them. Boy swimmers are still down there with this plan.
They are still, boys' swim team, not, not for PE class.
And for PE, that's not big enough if they were to do.
Right. And I know the future of the pool is kind of up in the air, but I just, I could hear somebody, I don't know who, somebody said right now. Warren Board builds locker rooms detached from pool. You know, I don't know. I mean, we're asking kids to, it might be, like it just. But I don't see any other way around it either.
Possibly resolve it, but it, it is an issue.
I just wanted to be, make sure I'm.
Can you speak to that more about how would we resolve that? Using current facilities or?
Well, if somehow that, if you want to put more money in the basement, which I wouldn't recommend, that's how you could resolve this. So swim, for the swim units for PE, they could use a smaller locker room. And there's other options with other areas to renovate that are upstairs to make a smaller locker room that could be both boys' swimming and water polo and PE for boys.
Walmart, buy them bathrobes. Give them all bathrobes.
I, I just have images of like a day like today and it's a swimming unit and we're asking kids to change. And then they're walking down a hallway that isn't always climate controlled and, I mean, the nice thing is it floods still back there. So they could swim on their way to the pool, but. I say that jokingly, but it, it's like, it, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood like what we're approving here. Like, we are approving kids for as long as the pool and who knows, it may never fully crack and may always be there as a unit. And we're just, we're approving kids walking down the hall.
My assumption is we try to make something work down in that basement. That's my assumption.
Yeah, but the whole reason we're doing this is to not make something work in that basement. Like, so I feel torn. No, no, it's good. I just, I feel torn. Like a part of it was.
Logistically, it's impossible, like.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know how you do everything.
The cost you would have incur is that what the current trainer's room is now, trying to make that a locker room. So no one goes in the basement anymore. And that is right stairs, right from the pool, right up that little short set of stairs. Some of you are familiar with it like that.
Point, point. I'm here with you. Where is it?
Oh, come on. Oh, wait, right here.
Okay.
You know, there's, there's like a handicap accessible chair and there's, it's only like five stairs.
It's just some, I don't have an answer. I'm just throwing it out there because let's say it wasn't a pool and it became a gym like Gage's Lake School. You would still have a need to change and access that room. I mean, that's what they did at Gage's Lake, Gage's Lake School. Yeah, they filled it in and it's just another gymnasium now. I don't have an answer. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I appreciate your point, Tony, but my concern now is that we're assuming we could do something to rectify what could be a very negative situation.
Yeah.
I would hate to approve sixteen or eighteen million dollars on the assumption that we can do something to help this out. I almost rather go back to the drawing board and say, what are the options?
It's an okay concern to bring up and shouldn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, cause that's, that's, we could be, I mean, we're concerned about having visual line of sight for people in the locker room, but we're gonna have boys walking down the hallway to go to swim class.
It could be a little bit of a black eye for us, I'm saying.
And it could be all about nothing too, but you know what? And I'm sure this is something we didn't think about during the original concept, so I'm glad you brought that up because.
I did not think about it and I don't know why I didn't think about it, but as I'm looking at this, it became glaringly clear.
I didn't think about it either. My only thing I was thinking about is, does this leave us room to potentially move the pool? I didn't think about, okay, how about the pool where it is right now and the activity is going on right now. So.
So, the girls' locker room is not in the basement, right?
Just a boys' swim and water polo.
So the girls would not be walking down the hallway. They would be, they have their own locker room for swimming. The boys is an issue, but we can address it because Pat and I have talked about that trainer's room, which will be available. So, we can look at retrofitting that.
Just for use of PE changing.
PE and boys and swimming, boys' water.
Yeah.
So, it's. Boys' water things, right?
Okay. And, and that is literally, like I said, there's five stairs. You go out the pool door, five stairs and ruin that.
That would solve it.
Yeah.
Provided that the design of that space has a good line of sight. Cause it's not just renovating, it's also fixing the line of sight issue.
Yeah, there's a cost to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's definitely a cost to it. Yeah, there's no question about that. And I can't speak to that.
Tony, are you talking about making sure that there's a space that a staff member can be up there to?
Uh, when I take a step back and think back to us starting, a part of it was just these dungeon dreary spaces. Another was having been down there, just not a very good line of sight or any supervision of kids in that dark and dingy space. So, we could update the space, but we could still have a line of sight issue with supervising kids. So if you're spending money anyway, there might be a way to, whether it's windows or moving a wall, just to make sure that we have better line of sight. Like behavioral issues are increasing, not decreasing. So to, to facilitate better behavior with construction and design would be nice. And it would, of course it would be. I mean, that just makes me feel better to say out loud.
Can I, can I just take one step back? Let's say we approve one or the other. We move forward moving locker rooms. What are we, do we have any thoughts about what happens to the current locker room space? Have we talked about that at all? What is that?
Storage.
Just storage, all of it. On pallets.
Cause we need, there is a serious need for storage.
Storage, okay.
Athletics and needs.
Okay.
And there is a lot of storage down there right now.
Yeah, I remember.
I remember seeing it.
Yeah, I remember.
I thought we talked about moving the board conference room down there. Maybe I'm mistaken.
Pat's office took precedence though, so.
Yeah, it's more long-term storage. Obviously stuff that can't be room by water, but anything that can be is put up. And I think that would be very useful to our maintenance staff and certainly our athletic department.
You see on pallets, I'm assuming it never floods more than like that?
Well, whatever. I'm just saying pallets.
Elevated.
Elevated.
It would be raised.
They make sure it's up six, eight, ten inches now. That happens already.
So do we need to, to Tony's point, do we need to include what the, the men's water facility changing areas would look like then? We just need to add to this? Is that what we're saying then?
Yeah, what I hear you saying, what I would probably recommend then at this point is that we were adding costs at this point. So we probably would take the more costly version off the table.
Well, the line of sight to me takes it off the table, but I don't know about anyone else.
But then we bring DLA in to figure out exactly what it would look like to turn that training room into a boys' locker room for water stuff.
And it's not unusual for us to add another element to a design at this, at this point. Again, it's very preliminary, so it's just a concept. So saying we want to solve that problem in addition to this, we can certainly take a look at that next and, and see what that would look like. But you're right. I mean, it, it could be, you just go ahead and make a decision this evening based upon that with the caveat that we are, we're gonna correct that as well.
I prefer we wait.
I'd rather see what the bill is, to be honest. I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot of money.
Going back to the two designs, are we losing any, I mean, I, I brought up the line of sight and that's why I favor the first one. Are we losing anything? I know you said collaboration amongst adults. I'm not, I mean, that I understand, but is there anything else in your opinion that we'd be losing if we were to?
Well, there's an individual referee's room that was in that that was called out, so that, that could be.
Okay.
Square footage.
Right. It is, it is square footage that you're losing. And really, the spaces can be manipulated any which way we want it to be. It's just that you take square footage out of one space and put it to another.
And I'll be honest, you know, the officials' locker room would be nice, but to me that was like, that meant nothing to me. Yeah, I mean, I've seen so many officials come ready to go in their car and they leave in their car. It'd be nice to accommodate them, but as a taxpayer, I'm okay not building them a separate locker room.
I also liked option one, forget the other part of the discussion, because when I look at the two, and I know it's just a design thing and things can be changed, but the option two looks like a lot more like a maze, like a mouse trying to get its cheese. It's like the walls here, wall there and, you know, that also, when you have a lot of walls and corners, it also provides opportunities for kids to misbehave. As opposed to when I look at option one, it's just very. As opposed to when I look at option one, it's just very clean walls without a lot of twists and turns and. It goes back to that supervision piece, whether it's the window or even just the design of the walls like this, I, it's nice to be able to solve knowing that behaviors increase in locker rooms, washrooms and those kind of things and. I'm sure someone in this room has data to back that up, it's not just a thought that that's the case, but. If we can des- solve some of that through design, which I think more is option one, that would be preferred by me.
Even the configuration of the lockers, look at the lockers on that too, and you've got all kinds of little cubby holes in there.
I just, you're dealing with high school kids, the more corners, the more opportunity for.
Bad things.
Nefarious things to occur, and I'm not talking cell phones.
Right.
Although a cellphone in the locker with a lot of, is not necessarily good either.
So the only other thing I'd, I'd ask is, and it may just be the way it's drawn and the way I'm looking at it, but the lockers, for instance, the women's, uh, the lockers are offset. Um, to the south by the laundry and the, um, storage area. And it is offset also somewhat to the office. Is there any way, is there any reason you wouldn't reverse that so that the lockers are more. Central to the office for the line of sight down the locker areas?
This again is.
I totally understand, that's my thought.
To get square footage, um, this is not the layout that you would see at the final, there's, there's months of design and planning and looking at sight lines that would occur after.
That's why I'm not an architect for sure, but I guess my only, then my only wish list would be that the office. Experiences the most. Visual is in shape of the lockers, that's all then.
So as long as we're, excuse me, as long as we're playing Mr. Potato Head with the, the drawing, is there any advantage of trying to move the athletic training room from the far side to more central, so the, the ladies don't have to walk as far? That's a question for you four. I mean, it's not really far for them to walk, but as long as we're moving things around.
Is there any rea- I'm curious and maybe it's only football, I don't know, but is there any reason why the women's are on the east end and the men's are on the west end or is it irreversible, like, I'm just curious. Is there a thought to?
It, it was proximity to the, to the field, to the field, so, but it can be any way you'd like it.
I was just curious.
How about injuries on the basketball court, they gotta go all the way around?
Whatever you would like, it doesn't, it's.
I mean, seriously.
It's just the discussions that were had.
Maybe northeast corner instead of northwest corner, whatever.
I, I will just say again, it's critical for the trainers and they'll tell you the same thing to the outside, that it's critically important for them.
I'm saying northeast corner because that's adjacent to the gym and if you. Do a compound fracture on the basketball court, you, you're right there.
But we have more outdoor sports than.
We don't do any basketball, I don't play, very rare.
Oh, okay, sorry about that, didn't think about it.
You certainly can put the trainer's room, um, in the more centralized location, but then you would have to go through locker rooms in order to get to the trainer's room. And what we were trying to do is keep it accessible from the, the corridor.
I think we need to listen to the trainers on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Although the way it's mapped out, if the, um. If the, uh, I don't know, weight room, whatever is added. I guess they have access through a, probably a door there or something, right? Okay, got it.
So what I hear is we, we need to go back and price out the square footage price for the locker room and the, what would become the old athletic trainer's office? Okay?
Yep.
We'll do that. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Thanks for entertaining our questions.
Carrie, appreciate your time very much. Next up under action items, is it disciplinary recommendations? Singular, any questions? If not, I move to approve disciplinary recommendation for student twenty twenty-five dash nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonti?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone, now we're gonna move forward onto the committee of the whole. Um, to start out, I move for the Warren Township High School Board of Education to move to the committee of the whole for the purpose of this section of the meeting. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Pope. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonti?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thanks, let's move forward with the student discussion.
Okay, so I've got, for the student discussion, I've got four topics that I just want to, uh, what I was hoping, none of them require any action right now, but they represent changes that we're looking at in the future. And before we get too far into the planning stages for them, I, I'm hoping to get some perspectives and priorities from the board. And a perspective also from our student, uh, voice around what we should be doing as we go into planning stages. For the most part, I think recommendations for these will come in the fall when we do normal course proposals, so I'm just gonna do a quick overview of these, they're in the packet, but I know we've got some people that. At the table and in the audience that might not have. Been able to see the agenda, so, uh, some of the discussion tonight is around graduation requirements, so we can just talk about that first maybe. We have traditionally, uh, in a high school, you'll have English, math, science, social studies, PE, we call it life fitness, and some fine arts or practical arts graduation requirements. Schools will also have electives. Before the pandemic, uh, we required students to take eleven semesters of electives. When the pandemic hit, we decreased that to three semesters required of electives. That was in part to address the unknowns of the pandemic and how that would influence our kids and their ability to attend graduation requirements. Plus, uh, just some pre-planning for the possibility that the referendum wouldn't pass. Um, and the possibility of moving down to one period less per day, which would then give students one period less per day opportunity to earn graduation requirements. So, we've been talking about, um, career pathways as a school district and. The idea of. Incentivizing students to explore career interests while they're in high school and, um, would like to talk with the school board about the idea of pairing the idea of. Encouraging students to explore career interests with the idea of specifying some graduation requirement increases. So specifically what we would be doing or possibly be doing that we would like to investigate for the next eight months is. Increasing the elective requirement from three semesters to six semesters, which would be adding three semesters, three cla- three classes that kids have to take. Uh, during their high school experience, but the three that we add, uh, would have to be chosen from courses that we've tagged as being career exploratory. Probably a lot of students would take a sequence of these courses, so they might know, hey, I know that I'm interested in engineering, so they might take three engineering courses. Or I'm interested in, um, healthcare, maybe I'll take two or three healthcare courses in a row. Um, but they might not, we, there are schools that require students to take a series of courses that are connected and are related. There are also high schools that have career exploratory requirements and they just say, look, you have to, you have to take three courses that are clearly connected to career preparation. Um, so we would do some research on that and look at the different models that are out there. There, if we were able to find a model that we thought was worth proposing, we'd bring that to you in the fall when we do normal course proposals as a graduation requirement recommendation. So just want to throw that out for initial conversation, pros, cons, um, perceptions, perspectives.
Two, uh, go ahead, Steve.
Talking about three in a row, uh, in a particular career path, and I'd take the first one for engineering and discover that I cannot handle the math and I hate it. But I've only got two credits left. I don't handle that. I want to go to healthcare.
Yeah, so that is, I think there are generally a couple of different models that high schools take, I'm not committing to a model tonight, I'm saying, let's go look at what the different models are. The models that I've seen out there are that, uh, one is a hard, you, you pick, you pick a career interest area and you, you take three, yeah, when you're a sophomore probably.
Okay.
I've seen models where they're like, well, you have to pick one and you get one chance to switch, which basically means you're gonna have to take at least two in a sequence. And then the more open option is, um, you just gotta pick three, you gotta be exploring and we're gonna try to make sure that you understand how those connect to career.
So I would pick the first one of each of the, of the three, just to get a.
That's a model, that's a model that exists, yeah.
Find out you're not interested right away, why aren't you, why isn't it available to change? Based on maybe another interest, I mean, that would pigeonhole a whole bunch of kids, it feels like to be. Kids that, I have a kid in college that still doesn't know what he wants to do when he grows up, so, we're asking sophomores to.
You've got a teenager about thirty-nine, forty years old, so you figure that out.
Have mercy, so, I don't have enough money for that, so I guess I'm just, you know, it, it. It concerns me, it, it feels like there's pressure to, you know, when we talk about those other models.
You guys addressed my thoughts too, it seems hard to say, you gotta take these three classes to explore, but you have to choose one line that you're gonna explore on, that's not an exploration, that's a path.
Correct. And if I want to be a fighter pilot and they don't offer that.
Right.
Sophomores too early to commit to that.
Yeah. My other comment I just wanted to make, I know our, our credit law that we require is very low right now compared to other schools. I just wanted to say out loud again, I appreciate how you frame that by saying, part of that was because we weren't sure if the referendum were gonna pass, so we had to do that preemptively. It's not because we don't want our kids to do well and get a good education, we were being very proactive when we needed to be.
A question on that one, does eighteen of everybody else is twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, right? Does that affect our kids when they apply to college?
Generally not, my understanding of most colleges is that. I don't know if I should say most, many colleges, um, are looking at what a high school offers and they're. Putting that up against what a student was, is able to put on a transcript or show, uh, in terms of involvement, and they're comparing the student against the high school opportunity.
Got student A and student B and student A did great with eighteen and student B did great with twenty-one.
Colleges say that they don't, they don't discriminate based on that.
Well, a lot of those kids that are doing great are picking more, regardless, I mean, we looked at that data and they were over. They were over selecting.
Yeah, there's nothing preventing a student from taking more credits, so if that's what their, their goal is, they can take more credits.
Yeah, out of, out of pocket, I could be off a little bit, but I'm not off too much, I think it's a little bit over eighty percent of our students are still taking more than. The same amount of credits that they were pre-pandemic or more than we required to them to take pre-pandemic, because most of our students are taking a full load of classes every day.
Hours, I don't know if you can answer this, does the average student take, how many of them go over eighteen and how far do they go? I guess is what I'm saying.
You're saying eighty percent.
Well, eighty percent go over eighteen, but I mean nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, is it, what's the average? And what I'm getting to is, if most of the kids are taking twenty, we can increase the grad to twenty and it wouldn't hurt anybody.
Yeah, you would.
Well.
You, you just said if most, that means you are hurting some group of kids.
All, all right, well, whatever.
I'd rather, I'd rather the option. I'd rather not increase the bar for everyone and forget about the kids that need that lower bar.
And, and I think, I'm gonna fill in a blank that's in my head that maybe you're talking about and I don't know and you can say if you are, but. My, some of my concern is there are kids that are struggling that need that flexibility in their schedule. To recover or get more help, right? If I'm not mistaken, is that true still, and so, does that's. Does increasing that afford kids that need more flexibility, the ability to get what they need? Because if you can take as many as you want, as many as your, you know, periods allow, and yet we have kids that really need that flexibility, what. Where are we falling on that, like, what? What does administration feel like, what do the teachers feel like, I, I, I'm curious to hear, like, I don't teach, I don't, you know, administer to these kids, so I'm curious about those kids.
Yeah, so, um, I'll try to go back and forth a little bit, uh, it's eighty-seven, so last year eighty-seven percent of our graduates. Took twenty-two and a half or more credits during their high school, uh, experience. Fifty-two percent of them took twenty-five and a half. If we go back to two thousand seventeen, much before the pandemic, uh, that twenty-five and a half was sixty, sixty percent, so there.
Eighteen.
Um, so there are. About. A hundred kids out of nine hundred, so maybe around ten percent that are taking between eighteen and a half and, um, twenty-two. The, there are twelve students that took eighteen and a half, thirty students that got nineteen or twenty, and about sixty that got between twenty and twenty-two.
Yeah, but it's.
But a small minority that, that needs the eighteen to get through by the skin of their whatever, but we're all practical purposes, we're doing as well as everybody else.
Right, but in, in the, like, when you look at it in paper. Visually, we, we look, I mean, we're lower, but yeah, we're technically.
Well, we're lower in requirements, but we're not lower in actuality in terms of results.
All right, is this one data point that needs explanation?
Many, uh, to continue the question line, many teachers feel like, um, the lower graduation requirements. Are a poor representation of the school and don't mirror our stated values of, uh, what we say we expect and we have high expectations of students and that's frustrating to them. I, I think, I don't actually know if we've, if I can say that I confidently. Heard the perspective of all of our administrators, I think at least me, at least some of our senior leaders would say that they're concerned. That if we raised the graduation requirements, it would require more work and effort for those bubble kids, the kids that right now are getting the eighteen and a half or the nineteen or the twenty. It would take more effort to try to get them, and struggling to get them over the line. I don't know if all of our administrators would think that, but many of them do.
Curious about the perception, the, you know, the alleged perception of the teachers feeling like we're not well represented if we don't have a certain standard and yet the data is showing that. Eighty-six percent of our kids are in effect achieving. What every other school, I mean, it's interesting, what, what is, what is behind that, I guess is what I'm saying, like, what. I mean, if you look at it, we're doing, the kids are actually doing it on their own, which is amazing and kind of what we hope the kids would do is. Self-direct and choose their own adventures and choose their own pathways and. Bringing their academic career forward, for the kids that need those options, those are the ones I, I'm reiterating, I'm worried about. And so when you say that some of the, you know, not you, but when, when there might be some perception that our school doesn't look maybe as good, I, I, you know, compared to other schools. I guess I'm, I'm okay with a nuance that actually supports. If, if it is the case, supports what we need versus what our. Perception is, I don't know, those are just my thoughts as hearing, hearing those comments, so.
That's kind of the same thing I was thinking, does two, two and a half credit difference make it, I, I struggle, that means that we have less expectation of our students, no. Maybe it means we're more cognizant of what some of our students need and maybe our students have really high expectations of themselves and that's why they're taking more than the eighteen and a half credits. So I'm, I just really don't buy that thought process that. Kids have less expectations just because there's lower graduation credits.
Clearly, it's not, that is not the reason they are taking, the eighty-six percent are taking it, I mean, clearly that's not motivating them because it's not there.
Yeah.
Not sure your average student knows the exact amount of credit.
Absolutely not.
We're sitting here talking about it, parents, kids.
If it's in the handbook, I missed that page, so.
They don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not sure they care.
So does Natalia.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, this is all on public record at this point, so I'll embarrass my family, but I don't know how many credits my own two sons in high school need to graduate.
It's internal talk, quite to the community.
That's what I'm getting at, I'm curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure anyone knows, I never knew, I don't think my kids know, they just do whatever their counselor says and then.
I know when my student picks stuff, he was.
Is, is there a correlation between higher graduation rates and higher requirements or a slash lower? In other words, the, the, the school that has twenty-one, do they have a, a higher graduation or a lower graduation rate? Is there a correlation there?
Yes, I have looked at that and I can pull that up while we're talking.
I would assume that they have a higher graduation rate they have.
I'm curious, I'll look it up, I'll, let's get back, I'm curious if our student has any thoughts, we've been talking a lot.
Um, I, I, I just had this thought, like, um, for the, the electives, that could be for what people wanna pursue in their career. Is, is it, could it work like how health does over the summer? Like maybe take online courses to see, like, the basics of it and just to inform yourself of it? If you really wanna take this class as what you wanna do if we do go with this career plan and stuff? I was just wondering if that's, if Canvas could work that way.
Yeah, I do, I do think in a minute I have another topic to talk about, uh, freshman seminar course. And I think something that would be really important that I think, tell me if this is part of what you're saying is that uh, students need some help doing some preliminary, like, research so they understand some of these courses before they select them, is that what I'm saying?
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah, whether it's over the summer or whether we're doing stuff during freshman year before you are picking those courses for sophomore year. I think that's a really, I really appreciate that insight, that that's what you're thinking about right now.
Can I go back to your question, Steve? I'm, I'm with you, I assume with the lower credits to graduate, we might have a higher graduation rate? I'm personally okay with that.
I'm, I just.
Because part of our, part of our job is to help our students get a high school degree and if that helps some subset of our students get a high school degree where they might not have in the past, I, I think that's great.
I'm not necessarily saying it's not, I'm just, I mean, if Stevenson has five percent and we have five percent, I'd be interested in that. I just wanna know, you know, what the, what the.
Yeah, but Stevenson, Warren, that's an apples to oranges comparison too.
Yeah, cause we're much, much better and more rigorous academic.
We have higher expectations of our kids.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
This is Warren, so.
I would, I'm not able to find a correlation from graduation rate to graduation rate requirements. One of the lowest graduation rates in Lake County is at Zion Benton and they have twenty-two and a half graduation, uh, credits required for graduation.
What's their, what's their dropout rate or graduation rate like?
Their graduation rate is eighty-seven percent.
Okay, and where does that stand with other people?
Um, I think that's the lowest in Lake County, that's the lowest high school in Lake County. Um, one of the higher graduation, um, rates in the group, I took Lake County and McHenry County, one of the higher graduation rates, probably top three out of the fifteen schools that I have, is Crystal Lake. They have a ninety-five percent graduation rate, which is up by our, where ours is and they have twenty credits required for graduation, it's really, I wasn't able to find a trend.
Yeah, it does, okay, all right, thank you, this is my question.
Can I go back to your, um, graphic there? So if we were to, let's say, require career pathways in three semesters, feel like by the time we implement this, we will have enough? And I, and I saw the, the outlines and whatever, so do you feel like we would have enough defined within career pathways for enough kids to have choices? Do you know what I'm saying? So if we're, if every kid is gonna have three semesters required, uh, you know, and just as an example, we only offer like ten, you know, or whatever, I'm just saying, like, are we gonna be able to diversify our offerings and, uh, produce our offerings? I know we kind of, I don't wanna say retrofit our current selections into categories, right? Kind, is, maybe that's not, that's a big, basic way to explain it, but I guess my question is, do we have enough for kids to say, okay, I can achieve this in the next, you know, whenever we implement this? Or is it gonna maybe take a little longer to do three semesters worth of work?
That's a great question, I think probably if we came to you with a proposal in, uh, the fall, uh, the two things I would, I think are gonna be considerations then are, uh, the model that you think is most important. What I've heard tonight is that, um, you would prefer a model that doesn't pigeonhole students. If we don't pigeonhole students and it's a lot easier to roll out a program because you don't have to have a sequence of courses already identified.
Give me the option, but don't make it.
Yeah, uh, second thing that I would, um, um, bring to mind is we'll bring you a proposal and we can't change graduation requirements for current students, we have to wait for incoming freshmen and, um, career pathway courses really would apply to sophomore, junior, senior, so we, we have a couple years still. And then the third thing I would say is we, um, in our career, I think we will continue to develop and hone the courses, but in the career guide that we gave out this year, all of those courses are courses that we currently have. Um, and students are taking, in many cases, they are taking two or three of those already as part of their current electives. Part of what we're trying to do is help students make clearer connections to after-high school graduates.
So you feel, I mean, I, just, uh, just the temperature of the water, like, right now, could we implement, do we have enough, like, yeah?
I think yes. I think we could do that, yeah.
Okay, I kind of felt like maybe it was, but.
If, if we didn't require a sequence.
Yeah, and we don't, until we offer fighter pilot pathway, we can't start this, so, right, Paul?
There's other options for that, I understand though, other pathways you can take.
I, I wanna say something about, I agree with Paul in the, I'm, I'm not necessarily, not talking about increasing the requirements because, and this, this comes close to heart, my daughter dropped out of this school and she is now a master's in psychology, but it crippled her for a couple of years. And I mean, it's, it's, if, if we have some kids that graduate and go on to, you know, be a janitor or something, that's wonderful because it's brutal when you drop out of high school, so I'm with you.
Get your recommendation and some of the bullets and feedback you want, like, I'm pretty much in line with everyone here, by the way. I'm okay with increasing slightly for, for a purpose. I was never in favor of increasing because we're just low. Like, this flexibility may have been needed for any kind of ISB career pathway rec, uh, requirements or we needed it for flexibility or, and it sounds like maybe there's a slight bit of need to hold kids a little more accountable just to take a little more of these classes, which I would be in, personally in favor of. So slightly if needed for a purpose, but your bullet points here, you were just looking to explore, you just wanted to not.
Correct.
Did you increase, cause you're gonna come back to us in October, so.
Correct.
Um, that's where I stand with this of. I don't know where, if we're all in agreement though, like.
Could I just ask a differentiation of, the, the difference between, and I know that, you know, we have the handbook that designates somewhat of a career pathway and for those that are interested, great, but the difference between that and taking electives? Cause that used to be like, in my day, that was our career pathway exploration, right? Like, we took photography if we were interested in that type of stuff or we took whatever, you know? So I guess, you know, is there a differentiation, you know, do we have to prescribe? Or, I mean, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm just thinking through it a little bit, is there a difference?
Yeah, definitely.
Is there an elective that doesn't fit a pathway, like, what would it be?
Yeah, uh, maybe Chris can come up here and give maybe two or three examples of electives that wouldn't.
Sorry.
Um, I would say some of the things that, um, if we tie electives to career pathways, I'll give two tables of what it allows us to do. Um, it allows us to, because we have such a big school as a system, start to offer, uh, internships or apprenticeships or work programming that is, is, is hugged around, built around that. And secondly, it allows us and gives us a framework to use, uh, future workforce needs in the area to develop classes that we currently don't have.
So I guess, yeah, we, we do have electives that are not necessarily a career-oriented, like, like, social studies is a good example. Like, once they get through US history, there's lots of electives in the social studies department, like psychology, sociology, anthropology, um, popular classes, but are not necessarily tied to a specific career pathway, at least as, as we have it laid out right now.
I don't, I don't understand that, as a.
Like, they're electives.
As a parent of a kid that's going into psychology, why wouldn't there be a career pathway?
Because right now, the way that we have, like, a psychology course could be part of like a health sciences pathway. We don't have like a pathway laid out, like, our psychology curriculum might not necessarily be specifically, like, designed for, like, you're gonna go be a psychologist, it's, it's introductory, it's a survey course, right? Versus a engineering class or sports medicine, which are very specifically targeted to, like, sports medicine was leading you towards, like, specifically to being an athletic trainer. Um, so because we're such, very much in the infancy of it, where we kinda drew the line in what we said is a part of a career pathway or not this year, were things that were very, very clearly aligned to a specific thing, like our engineering classes, our music classes, our performing arts classes for the communication and visual arts pathways. So that's kinda how we have that laid out right now, but essentially, you do run into the situation where you start to differentiate courses as career-specific, career, career pathway courses and then also courses that might support a pathway. Like, the, almost like a second layer of courses that you might wanna take, so if I wanna go, if I'm interested in the health science, if I'm interested in being a doctor, right? I might wanna take athletic training, I might wanna take sports medicine one, sports medicine two, but I should probably also take anatomy and physiology, might wanna, which I might wanna take psychology if I'm interested in the medical, in the medical field. I might wanna take sociology if I'm interested in something along those lines too. It gets, it gets very, it gets very nuanced.
I understand that, yeah, that's why I was, to my point, I was trying to figure out what elective would not fit.
Not many.
Do you know what I mean?
Not many, but they're just, those are the ones right now that like Law and America, actually, I think Law and America we have in our law.
I was gonna say, wait, what?
So, but to your point, most of our electives fit somewhere in because our electives tend to be career-oriented outside of like just the straight core curriculum of math, English, science and social studies.
That's where the conversation of, do we have to have a prescribed path? Like, or sorry, a required path?
Requirement, right.
Because if not, then it doesn't matter. Like, kids can bounce from thing to thing, they're not, like, your point can be true. Um, but by also having it, those that want, it, this provides the most flexibility. There's organization and certification potentially to some.
Requires the heavy work.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that's where we go back to, you know, for the people that need to explore. Um, they can explore, those that really know what they wanna do and they want more of it and their parents want to see more of it, they can.
And they want an internship, or they want some kind of a structured path.
It's, it's hitting up, different families, different kids have different needs, so I feel like that way of doing it probably meets the needs.
I think one of the ways to process career pathways and the value that it brings is it starts to allow a student to select courses with a career in mind that are outside of one department. So, they're outside of a single department. So if I'm going, if I'm interested in this field, that might pull in a, a science course, a business course, a technology course versus if you're processing it through straight elective selection, like, I'm gonna go take, I'm gonna take these business classes.
It gives you a map, but I think the discussion is, do we require the map to be followed? Or do we, you know, give them the, hey, here's the, here's the map to be an attorney, you, you know, these are the steps, these are the courses along the way that would like help you decide that, choose or not.
See the state is ever requiring that?
The state, uh, in around the career pathway endorsement, a lot of the language from the state in the, the state level meetings that I've been a part of has been the narrative of career pathways are meant to allow students to try on hats in high school when it's low risk.
See a requirement being pushed out?
No, where, where there's value to the district is in certain CTE fields. If a student takes multiple courses within the same program, uh, that does increase our grant funding in the, for those programs, I say. But that's not a requirement, that's just a, that's a funding mechanism, but that, that's not something that I would use to weigh, like, what do we wanna do academically, how do we proceed? That's just something that happens by the, through the funding formula.
Mine, if he's a sophomore and he's in the engineering pathway.
Our, our engineering program, like, they do a really, really great job. Um, and they've done a lot of work, like, you guys saw this year with, to try and stay current and rearrange things to create new pathways through their pro, their program that we have high interest to kids, using social media and branding and those sorts of things.
He's in that robotics, um, competition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just, I don't know if I'm sold yet on the, on the requirement.
But what about what you just said, like, you have the, I, I would, I, I agree with you with saying, let's not make it like a, a solid requirement. Let's say, hey, here's your path, if this is what you choose to do, then here is your, here's your blueprint.
Yeah.
And let's move forward.
Here's how you can achieve it. Right, if you wish. I think, you know, I just keep looking at the screen and what Danny's asking us to, right, you're kinda asking us to chew on is, do we, do we increase our requirements, number one? And then number two, the way, you know, the reasoning behind it is to, hmm, I don't wanna say sell the career pathways, but, you know, encourage kids to do that. But we wouldn't be encouraging them, we'd be requiring them, which translate into electives, right? So it's like, you're kinda like saying the same thing, if we're not gonna require them to stay in the pathway.
Just the end tangent point.
Yeah, I'm just talking out loud, I think, right now, like, trying to, you know.
So here, kinda my thoughts on this too, um, I think, you know, I'm, I'm all for this, you know, the electives and stuff, but let's be even more broad-minded. And maybe one of the elective classes could be going to a class one period every day that gives you extra help in math and science. It's nothing specific, we kinda have that right now, but the person has to wanna go there. And now they sign up and commit to every day, I'm gonna get extra help in these classes.
Supporting.
Right.
See, that's, that's my original comment was, I'm worried that they can't access.
So if we require that, but if we made that a requirement or an elective that they had to go every day, and my other thought, we keep talking about career pathways and credit for working and internships. I'm all for that, I'm also for credit for working if you work at Walmart. If you work anywhere, it doesn't have to be a professional career path. And I know I harp on that a lot, but that's what I did in high school, I worked shipping and receiving five days a week. It helped me out a lot, you learn a lot.
I worked warehouse too.
I mean, you learn a lot, it could be working for your family landscaping company, it could be anything, there's all sorts of great work experience outside of what people envision when you hear internships, so.
I wanna say that for the credits, if we were to bump, I wouldn't bump to start off any more than twenty and that would, that's just my feedback on that.
So what I sense, tell me if I'm wrong, what I sense is.
Summarize?
Yeah, you wanna jump in again?
Cause we said a lot of stuff and it affects, like, students, so I'm just curious, like, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but do you have any thoughts about what we're saying?
I wanted to go back to what, Mr. Schultz, right?
Yeah.
Um, to what you said at the beginning about, um, lowering the gradu, like, lowering the requirements to get a higher graduation rate? Um, is that exactly what we should be for, though? Cause like, I feel like in anything, it's, I'd say consistency, like, I, I, I'm, I, I was thinking about it, but like, trying to say it is like more, but, um, gotta get in the habit of consistency and, I mean, I get it, like, for graduation, some people, they, they, they can't do that, right? But what I'm trying to say is that I feel like we should have a bigger standard, I'm, I'm all for increasing graduation requirements. Me, as a student who.
High achieving.
Yeah.
High achieving and can achieve that.
I, I appreciate your perspective completely, you're a freshman taking honors and AP classes, so you've got. So you've got high expectations of yourself, now imagine if yourself, you are struggling in baseline classes.
Or have a learning disability that's preventing you from being able to achieve.
And when I'm talking about those, it's a, you know, it's a smaller subset, but we've got to think about all our students here.
Or you don't have the right support at home.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a cousin. Who doesn't have the support at home.
Yeah. So if 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 keeping the requirements a little bit lower helps them get a high school degree. That's why I'm, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, that makes more sense, yeah.
You're gonna push yourself, you're gonna come out of here with twenty-three credits, you're gonna be all honors, all AP push and all these things, and it's gonna be phenomenal.
And that's where Dr. Danny mentioned that eighty-seven percent of our student population is graduating.
Wave of our requirements.
At a higher rate than what we require.
Nobody, nobody's arguing with you, it's it's the greatest discussion, I think, because it's it's a struggle. And we've seen, like, we've had some experience with people, and I've had some conversations with other administrators in the. In the past who, you know, talk about if if some of these kids that are struggling. Do not achieve that high school diploma. They will be literally struggling the rest of their lives, and I'm not saying hand it out like candy. But doing what we can to support the process for kids to achieve that is where we need to figure out. Where we are on that spectrum, and I'm not saying make the requirement zero so that they can. Get a high school diploma and go live their lives, but raising it just to raise it. Even though eighty-six percent of our kids are already doing much higher. And the ones that aren't are probably the ones that are really struggling. To just keep their nose above water, and hopefully we've been able to give them the supports they need, but in some cases, we may not have. So that's part of the struggle.
If you can summarize all this, you deserve to be super into it.
Let's go, right?
Here we go.
When I was, when I when I did the homework, I looked at the graduation rates, I was all in favor, we we can't beat the worst, lowest, blah blah blah, I have flipped a hundred and eighty degrees. Nobody knows, it doesn't matter, we don't need to do it.
Tell them that to our students.
Yeah, we don't need to do it.
Give it a shot, Danny.
The impression I have is that there's a lot of interest in us doing a better job at offering opportunities and clear understanding. For career exploration and communication around how. High school courses connect to life after high school, but significant hesitancy around. The impact that tying that to graduation requirement changes might have on struggling students.
Good job, next.
Earned your money tonight.
I mean, is it okay if I continue to investigate, though?
Please, yes, absolutely. It's open for discussion, I would say.
Great. Other next one, I don't think is really much of a discussion item, this is just. It's important for you to know that most likely, and then I think it's in three years or maybe it's four years. There's a state change in graduation requirements that will require all students to take two years of fine art. Of foreign language. So right now, our foreign language fills our fine and.
So right, right now, technical, fine and applied arts is one. It's that's that one credit, and that's set aside as one credit from all the other electives, because that's the state requirement. And that's business, industrial tech, art, music and world language. With that state change, what ends up happening is world language gets pulled out of that. You still have the one credit of fine and applied arts, and now you have a two credit world language requirement. So that one that the state's saying that you have to have is now three in spread across two separate areas.
So we don't know exactly how we'll end up addressing this, because as we've walked through different scenarios. The decision that you make in the fall, you know, we'll propose something in the fall, you'll say thumbs up, thumbs down, or go back to drawing board. And that decision will impact in every scenario we've looked at, how we address the world language. Solution, and the world language solution comes like three years later, but I want to make sure everybody knows that. If we come to you with a graduation requirement request in a year, we're gonna come again three years after that. We're not, we don't get to choose the three years after that one.
Do we look at what our requirements are, whether it's math, science or language arts? With other surrounding colleges, and I'm only asking because Carolina has a girlfriend who recently. It was in a casual conversation where she said, oh yeah, I'm taking, you know, like, they were talking about their classes and she said, oh, I have to take. Spanish again, and I don't know if she said one or two years, I was just kind of kind of catching the conversation. But the point was that she fulfilled her requirement for Warren, but didn't fulfill her requirement for college. So she has to take. This class again.
It's college specific, though, right?
Yeah, sometimes it does happen in college, students might have passed like an algebra class here at high school and fulfilled our algebra requirement. But the college requires a college algebra and what they call algebra is different than what we call algebra. That is probably the case in most foreign language classes. So I do think that that happens on a regular basis in different categories of classes.
Our core requirements match the state requirements. Which is pretty consistent for most high school districts.
This world language requirement, it's more of a comment, like it, we'll figure it out, but I always wonder in the state's infinite wisdom. All of the schools south of I-80 that are tiny, can't attract teachers for just core subjects, much less. Specialized areas or languages that they now have to provide two years for. You got these districts with just a couple hundred kids that can't attract teachers today. You add this in and I I think a lot of them have gone to like online language modules, which. But it's it's very frustrating to see continued requirements. Not just for us, but others that may be not as well positioned as us and. And have them try to just function on a day to day basis as a school system.
Is that gonna happen?
It's passed, but they put it out so far in the future, I think, because they realize it's gonna be pretty difficult and it might. I I wouldn't be surprised if it gets changed.
Yeah, there was, there is a bill, I think it died in committee, but there was a bill to amend that change in school code. To change it to a world lang- two years of world language or or career technical education.
That would make more.
But that seems to have, I'm I'm tracking it, but it's been in committee for about a year now.
Yeah.
So.
No change.
This is a little personal, but I'm gonna throw this out. I got a thirty-three on the HCT. I I I'll I'll put my intellect up against a lot of people. And if that's bragging, it's bragging, I flunked Latin, flunked it, hated it, had to take it three times. You know, I mean, some people do not have. A different brain for languages, it's horrible, it's gonna hurt a lot of people. A lot of people that have no logical reason in their career path to take a language. Woo, can we lobby on this, or?
Yeah, go for it. Well, I think a lot of those. Systems that they're gonna go to their local, you know, legislator.
Yeah, and say, whoa, please.
Probably get changed.
I was gonna say, this is gonna get kicked down the.
Yeah, so like since the key is just kicking it down so they can do what they need to do, but this kind of stuff is what kills us as. School systems, when we're trying to do all this other change, and then they got you this other one they throw in there. It's 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 the state making it difficult.
It hurts a whole lot of people who have, God help them a mind like mine, who cannot assimilate. You say I did and Latin and horrible, just horrible, and it just couldn't do it.
The intent, you know, it makes the world smaller and we have a bit more connection with others, and I do get it, but I think there's just a.
I'm gonna make it up to go.
Component here, yeah. Thanks for my, allowing my comment.
This was mostly enough of YI, is it okay if I move forward?
Just do.
Okay, this uh this topic is probably more similar to the first one, I'm curious if there are specific perceptions or priorities. I do feel like I got some good priorities from the career pathway discussion, we'd like to research a ninth grade seminar course. Sometimes people call this different things, seminar is a word that we haven't used here at Warren. And so while we've investigated different types of non-content courses. This is a term that we've said, oh, this doesn't have any baggage or history, so we're, we've talked about the word seminar is. Doesn't mean it, it's still vanilla for us, but a ninth grade seminar course. Some high schools do this, and we would want to go out and learn from them. Possible priorities for a ninth grade seminar course that would be required for all ninth grade students would be to teach social emotional skills. Teach some high school success skills, that might include how many credits does it take to graduate, what happens if you fail a class. I think it is like one of the new things for eighth grade to ninth grade is, hey, if you fail a class, you have to take it again. Sometimes students don't realize that until they fail a class and then they realize that. Part of it could be teaching students to connect interests to their high school experiences, some of that could be courses. So some of that experience could be doing some exploratory experiences around career interest areas before those freshmen pick. Courses for their sophomore year, could also be. Formal efforts to connect in the clubs, activities, athletics. It would, because the freshman year is full, we put a lot of requirements on that freshman year, it's mostly designed for them. It would pull a content area class out, most, it could, it could pull a content area class out of their experience. So they have a little bit less content specific work, curriculum specific like science or social studies possibly. So that might make that first year a little bit more manageable for some of our struggling students. It could give them some ti- extra time for homework help, and it might be an opportunity to build relationships with peers or with adults. It could be a semester class, a year long class, it could be half a sem- half a period, a full period, lots of different models out there. We'd like to do some research into this to try to continue to support our ninth grade transition. Yeah, good freshman perspective here, that's perfect.
Before we say a word.
For that, I feel like you shouldn't make it like two semesters or one semester, maybe like half a class, if I'm gonna be honest. It's. It's a topic, but it's not something that we. For people that I know too, it wouldn't be that interesting, really. Right now, yeah.
So here my thoughts, when I was reading about this ninth grade seminar, I know it's just kind of a a concept right now. I was reading this in conjunction with, you know, career pathways and electives and stuff, my thought is, okay. We're looking at ninth grade seminar and some of these skills that we're looking at helping the students with. Well, where's the tenth grade one, or the eleventh grade, or we just assume in ninth grade they got it all down by now. So this could help fill in some of the electives and help kids with some of the areas that are kind of more gray that they're they're looking for help with.
Piggyback off that, if, and it's funny to talk about this in. Conjunction with increasing credit requirements and then throwing a class in that.
Credit?
Yeah, so, or it could be credit, but it doesn't fit into one of our pathways, you know, we're, so it's kind of a weird conversation to have. But let's say we took the credit piece out of here and there was, sky was no limit. A dream would be, cause I view this as nothing more than the A-word advisory. Which I think is good, advisory is not just good for freshmen, it's great for sophomores, juniors, seniors. And can be tailored to the experiences at that grade level, so this is an awesome eighth grade seminar advisory. Tenth and eleventh, could be a little bit of prep, helping with college applications, how to get a job, how to whatever. And then I may have mentioned this as a sidebar to someone, if it were, let's say a semester. It's not an all or nothing proposition, let's say Monday through Friday could be seminar and Fridays are win classed. So that period, these kids are allowed to shuffle and get what they need for that semester, so you get a little bit of what I need. Mixed in with seminar, again, my comments are, if credits were not a part, unfortunately, they are. If we're just talking a ninth grade seminar, I do like the concept of this, I think we're getting kids every year that are have more and more needs. We're looking at our local elementary systems and seeing that we need to maybe support a little better, this answers that call. We've talked ad nauseam, or at least I continue to bring up relationships, 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 of which this checks that box. And at least provides a core group of kids with one adult that. For no academic reason is just there for them or help can guide them or maybe even. A part of this is checking to see, are you failing a grade, and let me make sure that you're getting the help you need. That one adult that might be the counselor, might be this person. It just, it has an opportunity to set the kids off on the right path here, particularly as. In other conversations, we're saying that kids are coming in with. More needs that need to be addressed, so I like the, if you're just looking for like exploring this concept further, I love it. My secret wish, if credit requirements weren't there, is that this would be somehow mixed in as in a seminar. Not the A-word, for every grade level with a little bit of tailored content, depending on that, but. I love this, so I think this is exactly the kind of different innovative, let's try some, a new approach. Thinking, whether this turns out to this or variation of this that we, I think, could could use and could be in need of.
Tony, I really appreciate what you said, because you're saying exactly what's in my brain, but you say it much better than I do, cause I have my Chicago education.
No, 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 no.
I I I am, on record many times, I'm all in favor of four years advisory, four years homeroom, four years seminar. I don't care what we call it.
Seminar.
Seminar.
It's a career pathway.
Give them, give the kids, give the kids credit for them if we have to, but I think that four years of consistency is.
Okay, so he said the word, you you nailed tailored, tailored.
Oh.
And I think it, it kind of stemmed from, I think, your concerns, well, nobody, you know, nobody you know. Probably would be interested in hearing social emotional regulation, maybe.
Oh, yeah, to clarify, just like in general, it's like, like in general, like.
I hear you. Oh, if I saw this, I wouldn't sign up for it, but but the whole concept is, everyone's taking it. Yeah, everyone's taking it.
But I guess what I, when you said tailored, that's that's the nuance I'm thinking of is, you know, you have. Subgroups of kids that need different things, it's kind of the win concept when you said win on a Friday, or like whatever the case is. Like, yeah, not everyone is gonna need college application and to force, you know. Some of the kids to listen to college application is not gonna be productive, right? And so is it, isn't it, isn't it an à la carte? You know, kind of a thing where, kind of like win was created as an à la carte thing, like if you need study hall, you. Not necessarily study hall, but like those kids that. You may want to attend the how to become the lawyer, the doctor, the whatever kind of career pathway. Motivational, you know, just topic, someone else might want to be exploring the. Other side of maybe, you know, trades jobs and like, how, you know what I mean, like, and I'm not saying you have to like do a whole. Like city onto itself, but I guess more tailored is what I think about, because you, I don't. I can't see a whole cohort of kids hearing the same things, cause I don't know how that would relate to.
So this curriculum that they would develop. There could be a another bullet, just to say what you're saying in a different way, which is explore the career pathways. And so it would be a little bit of taste of the career built into this.
And I'm not even just talking tailoring for career pathways, like, you know, college versus not college, I'm talking about even. Other things like, you know, study habits and and being able, like, if you flunk a class, you're gonna have to. You know, maybe there's a cohort of kids that need to hear that type of information, and then there's another cohort of kids that need to. Hear something different, I guess, and I don't want to like.
Versions of seminar.
Versions of seminar, versions of advisory, you know, some are gonna be very self-directed and already ahead of the curve on some topics. So what do you do with those kids, are we gonna have them listening to things that they're. Already exploring themselves on their own because they're self-directed and doing things.
Yes, so I I appreciate what you're saying, and I I I get it, but I'm okay if it's, everybody hears everything. And let's say one of the topics we're gonna talk about is social emotional health, I don't need this, I'm not gonna listen. I'm not gonna sign up for that, if that's what we're talking about, I'll also gonna be like, oh, hey, they got a point there, oh, they got a point there.
Right, right, I'm not saying it wouldn't apply to everybody, I'm just saying like, are there things?
This this looks nice, but I admire your optimism. I'm all, I'm all for two through six. Number one, I know some forty-five year olds who should take all of that. And I'm gonna make a real smug comment, have the voters in this country, but I couldn't help it. You know, self-awareness, self, how how are you gonna teach that, and you learn that through life? And and some people never learn it, and to put that in a ninth grade seminar, I repeat, I admire your optimism.
Well, but there are a lot of. Well, you know. There are a lot of teachers that actually teach classes in empathy.
Well, fine.
Like, you could say the same thing for that.
When you look at number one, and that's a tall order. But I mean, when you, when you look at number one, and that's a tall order.
I think they can handle it.
I disagree.
I, I agree with that, but it doesn't mean we should ignore it though.
I'm not saying ignore it, but I'm saying put it in a seminar. I mean, if you have good, good teachers are going to teach a lot of that anyway in the course of, of what they do. I, I just, I, I hesitate in, in putting that on, on paper for a seminar. I just, I don't think it's possible.
Sure. So let's do the impossible then.
Let them prove you wrong.
Yeah.
First time I've been wrong lately, and I'm sure.
Point number three, do the impossible, Danny.
So what I hear is generally like this is probably a good idea to investigate. Um, when there's been past conversations around advisory and some of the values and things that people wanted to, wanted to see in an advisory, regardless of some of the operational specifics of that, this has some of that same spirit. And it might be great if we could learn how to do this in ninth grade well, and then we also thought about doing it in tenth grade or eleventh grade or twelfth grade or all grades. Does that sound right?
So why are we calling it a seminar versus just keeping it to advisory?
So um, the school district did do some pretty significant research and planning around an advisory. And I've struggled as I've talked about this with different groups of people. When I use the word advisory, it's been hard for them to mentally separate this concept from the really specific details that were discussed with the prior.
Guiding, you're, you're like holding someone's hand into, into guiding them into something.
Are you saying they're thinking of like, they're thinking of like how to pick classes and how to?
So the advisory system that we talked about as a district before was all students, um, it was every other week, every other week, and every staff member had a consistent group of students, including myself. I would have fifteen kids that I met with every other week. Um, and so when I say advisory to people, it's, they, we talked about that so much internally, they immediately jumped to that and it's been hard for me to pull them back from that really specific model.
What about like wellness seminar? You know, I'm just throwing something out.
I mean, it is advisory. In this group, it's the same. Seminar and advisory is the same thing.
Right, but like if we're going to, we're, we're going to make them separate advisory to seminar, but just saying seminar, you know, you could, you, you could come up with the word that kind of encompasses all six bullets. And wellness to me is, is a, is a word that we could use.
Okay, could you help me with the negative annotation or connotation of what you described that you guys have discussed in the past? Like I'm, I'm not seeing the negative, like is there?
So when I've said.
PTSD moment of.
It's not necessarily, it's not necessarily that they have negative emotions to it. They have a hard time getting out of the framework of every teacher has fifteen students all four years, every two weeks assigned to them, including administrators, custodians. They have a hard, it takes, it, it's just hard for them to get out of that framework, not negative. They just make so many assumptions around the model because of that.
Okay.
We might, we might end up calling it advisory. It has, using the word seminar has allowed me to have quicker conversations with staff around a new um similar but a different concept.
Sounds good. Go for it.
Okay. Um, I don't know how much the group will want to give feedback on this, um, but um, I did want to include uh just a report on our first semester efforts to make sure we're getting feedback and voice from different groups. Um, so I included a memo that had examples and some links to some of the results from what we've done with students, family and staff. Most of our efforts I sa- I would say have been centered around staff, a lot of real specific outreach to staff. Students are probably next to that. Um, we've done a little bit of outreach to family. Um, having a student here at our board meeting is part of our student voice outreach, but um, I don't know if, if, again, we don't have to talk about this for a long time, but if board members had questions or comments about um, kind of our framework approach um, or suggestions for improvement for the future, I'd be open to that.
Targeted surveys, what kind of response you get to the parents?
To the parents, we get extremely low response rates to the.
Two percent, twelve percent?
Uh, it'd be more like twelve people.
Twelve people?
Yeah. People sometime, well, um, like twelve, if we did an overall survey, we might get ten to twenty people. Uh, when we did a tar- targeted survey at the eighth grade night, it was a tell us something specific that you want to know about high school, a lot better response to that. How many did you have on that show? Yeah, so that was.
QR code in that thing. It was awesome.
Yeah, so we're trying to figure out how to ask parents specific questions that we can somehow respond to as opposed to just general perception surveys. They don't respond well to general perception surveys. I know.
Fascinating.
I know stakeholder voice was some, is something that's been important to the board since I started, so.
Enjoyed looking at all of it.
Anything else?
Thanks for all those efforts.
Thank you a ton, Danny. If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene the regular meeting. Roll call.
Yes. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonti?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I have yes motion hearings.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? If not.
May I ask another question?
No.
Can I get some quick feedback on for committee of the whole discussions, this format, this layout?
Yeah, I love it.
I love it.
I love it.
Committee of the whole is for conversations.
Shooting back and forth.
And when you set a structure that facilitates better conversations, feels a little less formal. I think it helps us be a little more honest in just throwing ideas out. That's very formal, which we need for formal business. This is good for committee of the whole. I like it.
Thanks for being with us, Victoria.
You.
Hopefully it's scary.
Thank you very, very much.
If you ever want to call it, go into politics, give me a call on here.
Oh, for the love.
We'll see you next time.
That being said, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Pope, Mrs. Martinez?
Yeah.
Mr. Demonti?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
It is absolutely ridiculous. Do we take a roll call for this? Yes.
Jeez.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I have yes motion hearings.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.